This is episode 625 of the Rio Grande Foundation's Tipping Point, New Mexico. I'm Paul Guessing.
And I'm Wally Drangmeister.
I'm president of the Rio Grande Foundation, New Mexico's free market think tank. You can find out more about the foundation at rio grandefoundation.org. Wally, it's easy to do show prep these days. Sometimes the dog days of summer get a little tricky because there's not much going on. Now, obviously, this is an election year and there is plenty, more than plenty. We're just having mind blowing moves of historical significance every single week at the national level. And even some big stuff at the state level. But the latest, of course, is that Joe Biden has dropped out of the presidential race over the weekend. Because this is such an important issue, we have our questions to ask of people. And generally speaking, the situation, but I'll start with this. Kamala Harris looks to have locked up enough delegates to go ahead and run for the presidency. But Joe Biden has not been seen. Yes, he had COVID, but even his statement was just a screenshot of a written letter. We have no evidence to this date, you know, five, six days at this point, that Biden agreed to this willingly, that he is healthy, that he's okay. It's a crazy situation in this country right now.
Yes, it is more than a little concerning. I saw a news report this morning that said, the president is expected to be back in the White House this afternoon at 2:30. And we will see, maybe there will be a sighting of him at that point. But yes, a lot has gone on, you know, starting with Trump. Now we have a new Democratic, I don't even know what you call it, the apparent nominee. Is that the right word? And it is one of the things, and maybe we'll talk a little bit more about this in a minute, is that it was pretty amazing, the speed with which out with the old and in with the new, was seemingly solidified on the Democratic Party.
Yeah, well, I guess we'll start with this. Senator Heinrich and Rep Vasquez, both before the weekend, had officially stated that they wanted to see Joe Biden step aside. So that was, I don't know, maybe Wednesday or Thursday of last week. It's important to note because they were among the earlier public statement signers or people putting out public statements in Congress saying that they wanted Biden to go. They're of course in relatively competitive races. Then Biden said that in an interview that he might resign if he had a health issue. Then he came down with COVID-19 despite being vaxxed however infinite number of times that he's received the vaccine. And really, aside from those statements and some tweets, which obviously he's not running the Twitter account. They were tweeting during the debate, for example. He has not said anything publicly. So it is quite odd. I will run through a few questions that we have. First and foremost, if he's unfit to run for office, is he really fit to be president for the next six months through January of 2025? Of course, we know Kamala Harris is very likely to be the presidential candidate on the Democratic side. She will rise to that position without ever having won a single primary delegate in either the last presidential election, which she ran in and exited early, or in this race. So avoiding the entire primary process. Who will the VP candidate be? I think Mark Kelly from Arizona is one. There are others, Whitmer from Michigan. Pennsylvania is Shapiro, the governor over there. You know, some are saying Michelle Lujan Grisham is an outside opportunity. I truly doubt it, but at this point, it's wide open and it's really.
Oh yeah, she's truly an outside candidate, probably, as are you and I. We're on the list of people who are on earth who, well, actually were Americans above the age necessary.
Right, right.
A vice president, so.
Right, let's see. You know, will Donald Trump debate Kamala Harris? Should he decide to? Should Harris be considered a legitimate candidate? Especially at this point where she hasn't won any delegates. That is the process that we have in this country with both parties. We're not doing the smoke filled room thing at the conventions, which used to be done. And, you know, having an open convention would have been at least a process. There's no real process in place here. And, you know, I can only imagine how this would be received by the media if Trump bowed out of the race at the last minute, totally to be replaced by another Republican candidate running for president. The media, by and large, are rallying around Kamala Harris for being unique and all these specific things. But I just can't see how there would not be outrage and Republicans would be in serious trouble for doing similar tactics. But, you know, will this be something? Whereas if the elected or the person successful in the most primary votes doesn't perform well in polls as you approach an election, you just get the hook out and take them out. There's a lot of questions that are being asked. These are some of them, but I don't know many answers out there for any of them at this point.
No, and neither do I, Paul. And, you know, it's amazing, the political parties control that process. And it is very interesting, the Democrats are, you know, one of their mantras is that if Trump wins, it'll be the end of our democracy. Well, it sure doesn't seem very democratic, the way they select their presidential candidate the last couple of times. And Paul, I saw an interesting note from Maggie T. Luis Oliver, the New Mexico Secretary of State, warning against misinformation about the process by which Democrats select a presidential candidate. And believe me, I'm interested in that because it seems like the rules are at a minimum, what shall we say, malleable and flexible to the situation. It doesn't seem like, you know, we elect in there and, you know, then they've had the thing about super delegates in the past, and there's a whole lot of things going forward. But my recollection is Kamala got 1.4% of the vote when she was allowed to be on the ballot, you know, for becoming the candidate. And now here she is. It's a nice work if you can get it and we will see what happens. But to your first initial question is yes, if the president isn't competent to run for president, is he competent to be president? And it's not like this issue hasn't been contemplated with the 25th amendment. But I don't hear any talk about that at this point.
Yeah. And I'll just say that Kamala Harris, while she's relatively low profile, I mean, she is a vice presidential, you know, she served for a decent amount of time here with Joe Biden. A lot of people haven't familiarized themselves with her. She has a very off putting personality, I think it's safe to say, her cackling laugh and just at inopportune times. She said she wants to ban fracking. She is the borders are for the Biden administration, which of course, that just is a softball over the plate for Donald Trump. Just a lot of significant issues. She's not exactly earned her way to the top in many respects. Of course, the history with Willie Brown, the powerful speaker of the House in San Francisco and California, that she's widely known to have risen to the top. Not via her merits, we'll just say that. But there's a lot of things that are going to come out about Kamala Harris that I think will give people a very strong reason to have a second thought about her. And you're never going to turn those diehard Democrats who will vote for anybody. But I do think that Kamala Harris could, there is a chance that she could be even worse electorally than Joe Biden. And I think it's going to be a counterfactual that we'll never know the answer to. But the reason that Joe Biden got to be president in the first place is because Bernie Sanders was on the verge of winning the Democratic primary nearly four years ago, or really four years ago. And the Democratic establishment did not want a self-described socialist to win. Of course, Bernie Sanders lasted a heck of a lot longer in that process than Kamala Harris did. So Biden, I think there were certainly rumors about his mental faculties even back then. Those were exposed fully. And now Kamala Harris has managed to rise to the top. But it is, it's going to be a heck of a next few months. And we'll just see where this whole process takes us. But yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, Paul, to your point, you know, it wasn't that many months ago when Biden was appearing a little better than he has recently. That, well, Biden, Biden is more electable than Kamala. So as much as, as much as it seems like everyone knew, all the insiders knew, the media knew. You know, it is interesting how the talking points, just a couple of short weeks ago is, I've never seen him sharper, he's on top of things. He's, he's the guy, you know, nothing gets by him to, he's got to go. You know, it just turned on a dime. Well, and back in the Biden is competent era, a few short weeks ago is that Kamala is not electable. She's not popular. And now they've just flipped both of those. And so she's almost had a media and a party coronation and she's riding high right now. But the fact is she needs to run for president. Or is it the situation where she may run almost a Biden like campaign from during the COVID era? Just stay at home and not talk to anybody and figure that she's at a stronger position as she could now and to get out and have people know her would only make it worse. I don't think that would happen. But, you know, as I say, she was viewed to be much worse than Biden and just till a few short weeks ago.
Yeah, and for good reason as well. Well, we'll get back to national issues in a moment. But we had a special session here in New Mexico. And I would say that the results of that are in many ways equally intriguing and interesting as they were in Washington. Obviously not the kind of national attention that's been poured on the presidential race. But on Thursday, Michelle Lujan Grisham, I couldn't make it up. For the one day special session, I was in Clovis, traveling to Clovis, New Mexico, to do a talk and have a few meetings out there. So I missed out on the fun and games and was planning to go up on Friday, but they didn't have, it's the party that was canceled. So let's say this, regardless of whether you think that the governor's crime ideas were the greatest things since sliced bread or just warmed over and non-effective. And I think it's safe to say that when I talked to Representative Montoya, the minority leader of the Republicans in the House, he kind of led towards the more ineffective side of things. But they did get a sponsor, the only sponsor they could get for a lot of these priorities was Senator Mark Moore, is a Republican departing from the legislature. Yeah, somebody who's, you know, always in my estimation, been a conservative, certainly on fiscal issues. One could talk about other things and I'm not going to get into that. But on a dollars and cents regulatory kind of perspective, Mark Moore's will be missed in Santa Fe. But ultimately, the governor is the one that's making the headlines because her statement, to say that she is a little bit miffed by the Democrats is maybe a vast understatement, but I'll read this paragraph. The legislature, this is from MLG's statement post-session. The legislature just demonstrated that it has no interest in making New Mexico safer. Not one public safety measure was considered, not one, despite the bills having the backing of police chiefs, public safety unions, mayors, prosecutors, businesses, tribal leaders, crime victims and others who have seen firsthand the erosion of public safety that has deeply damaged the quality of life in our state. She continued saying that she believed that the majority of Republicans would have passed many or all of these bills, but they were blocked. So the governor is making it very clear who she blames for the failure of the special session. You know, I think it's safe to say that looking at this from maybe a more objective perspective, the governor mishandled the situation for six years. And it's kind of odd to come at this from a special session standpoint. But it is gratifying to see finally, the blame being put on the progressives in the legislature who without a doubt put a stop to any Republican anti-crime bills for six years. And the governor was silent, not only silent, but as we said last week, has been out there electing progressive legislators in Democratic primaries to make the legislature even more left wing on crime issues. So it's just baffling, the whole thing.
No, the whole thing is very baffling. And Paul, you know, we've talked about the outsized influence of the progressive wing of the Democratic Party that until this session, our, the New Mexico governor was well aligned with. But I do have a feeling, you know, you look at all the progressive groups that said, no, we don't want, you know, any new crime things because of all of their assorted, difficult to follow, yet strongly believed reasons. But I do think that if you look at who's been successful in get out the vote campaigns, it's the progressive wing of the Democrat Party has done very well in New Mexico. And I think most of the Democrats said, we don't want to go against them. We don't want to have a black mark on our progressive record going into the general election when some of us have, some of us have elections. So that is one theory, again, not necessarily proven. But the other is that maybe the legislature and again, the Democrats, not the Republicans. The Republicans haven't been able to bristle. They haven't been able to get much done in the entire Michelle Lujan Grisham administration. But maybe the Ds, no matter their stripe, just got tired of being dictated to by the governor. And they were going to send her a strong message that there indeed is another branch of government in New Mexico and she is not in charge of it. So maybe some combination of that, maybe something else. But it's interesting to note that they didn't just do the signy die, you know, log in and log out sort of thing. But they did some, you know, not unmeaningful kind of spending that had to do with the Ria doso fires and some stopgap measures because the federal government's so slow getting aid. But it's interesting that they put that in the FEED bill, the bill that pays their per diem and et cetera, that if they wouldn't have done that, I think they were concerned that maybe the governor would veto that and they wouldn't get their per diem and their mileage to come up to Santa Fe for the day. And as of, as of this morning, I don't know. I don't believe that bill has been, you know, the FEED bill has been signed to the best of my knowledge. So will she veto, is there a veto in the works? Are these poor, destitute unpaid legislators going to be out their gas motel and meal money? You know, these are, these are what passes for important questions here in New Mexico politics, so.
That was one I hadn't thought of, excellent angle. That's why, that's why we bring you in for the high level analysis there, Wally. And that's going to be interesting to watch. Speaking of high level analysis, John Trevor, the Albuquerque Journal cartoonist, hit the nail on the head yet again. I took a picture of it and put it up on my Twitter account. It's a picture of the front door theoretically of the roundhouse. Legislature criminal justice session, a bunch of donkeys lined up, ready to go into the building through a revolving door. And then they are coming out the other side of the same revolving door. A couple of security guards saying, there they go, right back out on the street. Guess they figured they won't face any consequences. And the kind of tagline is yet another revolving door. Now, obviously, there is a revolving door for the criminals. And in this case, the revolving door worked for the legislators. Will there be any consequences? Well, we're past the primary election as a consequence. As we just said, the progressives took even more ground within the Democratic Party. Will there be consequences this fall? That is a very open question with all the chaos at the national level in the presidential race. It is impossible to say where things will wind up. But boy, what a, what a mess. And, you know, the governor is in many ways a lame duck. I suspect that they will still be eye to eye and united on easy, easy issues like spending lots of money, corporate welfare for preferred businesses that they theoretically want to attract, film subsidies and the like.
No accountability for anybody, including education, crime, you know. Accountability, no accountability.
Paid family leave. I still think that unless the Republicans make inroads in the November election, that we'll see that pass. So I, nothing, nothing papers over hurt egos more than spending lots of other people's money. I found that out.
Yes, and, you know, it will be interesting to see what the governor's power is to do things. You know, we've, I think, I talked a little bit, I talked a little bit last week about Governor Gary Johnson being the veto vato. He would, he would veto lots of bills and there were enough Republicans to block an override of his vetoes. And so that was his tool. Well, you know, she's starting out with a, she's starting out with a lot of Democrats in the legislature. She vetoes a lot of their spending bills or their pork barrel or whatever. They, they are mighty close to the point of being able to override both of those vetoes with a few, if any, Republican supporters. So, you know, the, it is, I think we're in a little bit of uncharted territory. Not that, not that we haven't had governors of the Democratic Party be in disagreement with the legislature, but it hasn't been as much of a whip saw as this one from everybody on the same page to now neither side, not even close, not even in the same book.
Yeah. On the fires, specifically down in Ria doso, the Albuquerque Journal and other media outlets have reported that a couple is suspected of setting the salt fire and several others on the Mescolero Reservation, the Apache Mescolero Reservation. According to the FBI, the salt fire torched 7,000 acres around Ria doso. And there were more than a dozen smaller forest fires set in the surrounding area. Now, these people have not been formerly charged, but there does appear to be grounds for at least some of the fires down in Ria doso being set by humans, which is obviously really troubling and something that I don't, I don't really know. I don't know how you can prevent this kind of, it's kind of like the environmental equivalent of a mass shooting, kind of, it's very, very hard to prevent this kind of willful act of not negligence, but just lack of care for humanity.
Yeah, destruction and wanton destruction. And when the, you know, in New Mexico, this is not a new thing that we have a forest fire season. But, you know, with the forest being drier, coming out of our hundred years of forest management shame, where we never let any fires burn, it just does not take that much at the right period of time. And you get somebody who, no matter what their, you know, what their psychological diagnosis is, whether they're pyromaniac, whether they are, you know, have some other mental disorder or just out and out criminal, doesn't take much, you know, a few matches, a five, five pound container of propane, you know, you could do a lot of damage in a short period of time. And it reminds me, a few years ago in the Bosque of Albuquerque, they have, they had a lot of fires that were set. And the people who were doing that, guess what? They knew, they knew when it was the driest. And they would also knew back then, they used to do more helicopter kind of suppression at night, but they quit that. And so they'd start them right at dusk, right as the sun went down. So it's not like they're not intelligent in terms of knowing when the most damaging time to do it is. But what do you do? Think you have as good a forest management as possible? And heaven forbid, we might need to thin trees even quicker. But as we said, nobody is, the New Mexico poster child for having done a good job was the Mescolero Apache. They've done so much, believe me, they beat the Forest Service, you know, by, by a factor of 10 times better and still in a dry conditions with somebody setting a fire, you can't do anything about it.
Yeah, and of course, deeply tragic for people all across that area of our state, the Ria doso area. Moving on to a report from learner.com. It's a legit website. I looked through their rankings and other information available on their website. It's an education data oriented site and they have something out that I thought was very interesting. They looked at education spending by state, but they added in higher education and factored in, you know, all the taxpayer dollars that are spent for all levels of education. I think this holistic approach is actually quite a good one because it is certainly the policy of the state of New Mexico to encourage people at all levels academically to go to college. We're now doing free college, so that means the spending is further up. But overall, New Mexico came in as the fourth ranked state for spending the most on education per student. Alaska, Michigan and Hawaii were the three states that outweighed New Mexico, but a total spend per student of 45,717. Now, I'm absolutely positive because we've done some research on this, that part of the challenge is that the K-12 system doesn't get the job done. Therefore, a lot of these college students are taking extra time doing remedial coursework in their first year or two of college. And, and that is adding to the expense, of course, once the taxpayers are paying the bill, you're also getting more expenses piled up there. But fourth most, spending on education overall, or holistically speaking, what are we getting for that? I don't think the, the answer is very good in terms of what we, what we're receiving.
Well, yes, no doubt. And then, you know, the, it's not the resources in, it's what's being done with them that is the issue. We've said that, but it's getting hard to run away from that. More and more groups coming out with reports like this that don't always make that point as directly. But even, you know, the Legislative Finance Committee is starting to say, hmm, maybe we're not doing things quite right because we keep spending more money and the results don't get any better, at least relative to the other 49 states in the Union. And Puerto Rico and the District of Columbia, when they're putting in those reports.
Yeah, so again, you can check that out and links to the reports at errorsofenchantment.com. Moving a little bit back to the federal level, I had a recent post about make firing government employees common again. And this is kind of in the wake mostly of the assassination attempt on Donald Trump, especially the poor response, the overall lack of competence exhibited by the Secret Service. I think if you'd asked day before the Donald Trump assassination attempt, which entities within the government are the most competent? I think the Secret Service probably would have come up as one of the most respected. That is no longer the case. The good news, I guess, since I wrote this originally, Director Kimberly Cheadle has resigned. She had a very troubling hearing before the House of Representatives yesterday in which she did not respond to many questions. Of course, it's not just this incident and this incompetence that needs to be held to account. There was the Afghanistan withdrawal during the Biden administration, COVID policy. There was the Afghanistan withdrawal during the Biden administration, COVID policy, uh, while Trump didn't have as much time to uh, change uh, the way that was handled. Certainly his adherence to Dr. Fauci's pronouncements uh, did not help Trump go in the right direction when it came to COVID. Biden even more so, uh, as he stuck with restrictions and poor COVID policies throughout the COVID-19 uh, pandemic, uh, especially those that hurt children, kept them out of school. Uh, there, there's just so many examples of government officials being incompetent and we could look right here in New Mexico, uh, same thing, COVID uh, policies that kept New Mexico children out of school had devastating impacts on their educational outcomes and social outcomes, uh, putting us at 52nd nationally and uh, the nation's report card. Uh, again, nobody gets fired for these things and Democrats in Washington are trying to make it more difficult for uh, potentially Donald Trump as president to get rid of incompetent government employees. So uh, I don't know. I, I'm not saying Kimberly Cheadle's a uh, a step in the right direction, but it, it's something at least.
Yes, and you know, it's one of those things, uh, I have worked, uh, not in a government organization, but I have worked in an organization where uh, terminations were all but uh, all but impossible to do. And so uh, what happens is that if somebody does a bad enough job or they're incompetent enough, you just try to find them another job in another agency. And it seems like that's about the worst that ever happens uh, with the federal bureaucracy right now. And again, not uh, I'm not hard-hearted person, you know, I don't believe there should be indiscriminate firings of people, but you know, there, it's gotten to the point where there are just, when you have a bureaucracy the size of the federal government and the number of people who lose their job, uh, who lose their jobs, uh, is such a small fraction of a percent on an annual basis, it just uh, it's just not credible that they're doing a good job of uh, keeping the best and the brightest going and motivated and working and uh, getting rid of those who are just in the way or not doing anything, or in many cases, making it worse.
Yeah, and uh, it is worth noting that during their debate, uh, which seems like eons ago at this point, uh, President Trump did uh, call Joe Biden out for being unwilling or lacking in the uh, backbone to fire uh, people who specifically on the Afghanistan withdrawal, but in general, that was a criticism. Of course, Donald Trump made his uh, you know, he was a well-known figure before that, but one of his most famous uh, lines on television was, you're fired. And uh, uh, I think it's uh, something that needs to be brought back uh, to government across the board. Moving along, the uh, kids count report, we've talked about it, but I do want to uh, just make sure folks are aware, I had a opinion piece that was uh, run across the state and uh, right now it was in the Sunday Albuquerque Journal, uh, just highlighting the way in which uh, we're spending a lot of money, uh, we have a lot of money to spend, uh, but we're not moving the needle on the kids count report and I go into all the gory details. But ultimately, uh, as we are want to do, uh, we call for policy changes and uh, school choice is the simplest thing to do to bring uh, our education system up. Maybe not the simplest, but it's the, it's, it's probably the most fundamental change and the most basic. Of course, Mississippi model and uh, driving reading results uh, higher would be another way to approach that. And then of course, uh, we have this largesse from the oil and gas industry that uh, has not done anything of note to make New Mexico a, a better and more prosperous state. So uh, thanks to the mismanagement and incompetence of uh, of Michelle Lujan Grisham and the legislature. So uh, certainly using the left's data to make the case that if we want to improve outcomes in New Mexico across the board, uh, limited government, individual responsibility, encouraging people to get jobs, not sit on welfare, um, lowering taxes, reducing regulations, school choice, uh, other accountability measures, uh, that's the way to go, not just, oh, we got a lot of money, let's uh, A, throw it at government programs and B, save it in government accounts.
Yeah, and Paul, it's interesting to note that there are places around New Mexico where the public schools uh, perform better than say they do in the Albuquerque public schools and certain others, and they actually uh, have less uh, charter schools and other alternative to the uh, government schools. But you know, to your point about uh, why school choice is a good way to do it, uh, you know, there's this uh, concept of the self-reforming bureaucracy, that the bureaucracy can right itself. And uh, it's, it, it is a, it's a joke, it's an oxymoron. And we've gotten to the point where uh, you know, the public schools, they need a little, they need a little pressure. And uh, you know, one of the statistics about why school choice is so effective is that not only helps the uh, schools that are formed, uh, the alternative charter schools and the like, uh, the actual public schools have some incentives to actually get better and they tend to do a little bit better job as well. So is it the, you know, in a perfect world, things would be working so well that the uh, government uh, monopoly schools would be doing great and we wouldn't have a problem. But guess what? That's not the situation we face. And so yeah, it's a uh, very good way to do it. And uh, it is interesting when uh, Susana Martinez proposed uh, some very uh, at the time, uh, controversial education reforms, how bad uh, the other side fought against those and made lots of excuses. Well, now they're, they don't make r- excuses for the policy, they make excuses for the lack of performance. We're, we're, we're the worst in the country, but we're a little better than we were. That's about uh, all I've heard with the recent uh, reports on educational attainment in New Mexico. And so hopefully something will change because man, you know, we have this whole thing where there's a, there's a case to provide uh, more funding for Native American and other disadvantaged uh, communities, but the money is not making the difference.
No doubt. All right, well, speaking of uh, policies that uh, aren't going to do a darn bit of good for anybody, uh, according to the LA Times, statewide electric vehicle sales growth saw a drop in California. Uh, and not just uh, growth being dropped, but according to this article, uh, California saw a overall decline in EV sales uh, between the second quarter of 2023 and the second quarter of 2024. Uh, 102,730 were sold in the second quarter of 2023, 101,443 were registered in the state in 2024 in the second quarter. So uh, this is concerning for those like our governor and others who are headlong demanding electric vehicles and putting up subsidies and other mandates to force EVs into the marketplace, into an unwilling consumer market. Uh, Gavin Newsom, of course, is going all the way to uh, abolishing the internal combustion engine by 2035, at least that's the plan, stated plan. Uh, Lujan Grisham is only going to 82% by 2032, which is uh, problematic and radical enough and simply will not happen. But we're of course, less than two years out from 43% mandate. Uh, New Mexico's not nearly as far down the path of EV uh, adoption, EV mandates as California, but and nor do we have the deployment of the uh, charging stations as they do out in California. But uh, if California sneezes, I would say New Mexico uh, EV owners are going to catch the flu. So uh, th- this is not good news on top of other bad news for the EV push.
Yeah, and that uh, if they sneeze, uh, we get the cold, that's not necessarily by the driving public, but by the uh, the governmental entities that are forcing all this down. And uh, yeah, EVs are, EVs are struggling, you know, uh, there's a number of factors. I was reading a Goldman Sachs report and it's like, uh, they don't make as much money because capital costs are high, you know, in the, in the auto industry. And then uh, there's a lot of uncertainty around what the government policy is going to be. We have these strong uh, we have these strong mandates in places like California, New Mexico signs on, but other states don't do it. And finally, those charging stations, boy, we sure do a lot of press releases and allocate a lot of money to them. But uh, in places like New Mexico, and really it sounds like most of the rest of the country, the numbers of uh, fast charging stations that actually get built and run and operate uh, appropriately to charge vehicles is really at a extremely no, low number for this uh, at this point in the, in the rollout of this, quote, the industry to end all industries here in the United States.
Yeah, um, finally, we will uh, briefly touch on the fact that Argentina has moved out of a recession uh, for the first time in uh, in years. So Argentina is, you know, economically under a libertarian or free market conservative. I don't think it really matters and I don't think it necessarily directly applies to uh, you know, Argentine politics, uh, you know, calling him the next, or the Argentine Trump, I mean, maybe his kind of approach to politics, but uh, Argentina was announced, uh, they had managed to uh, get out of a, a recession, uh, which means a shrinking economy. Uh, and that's, that's tricky because it took a lot of effort to get inflation down and then on the other hand, to bring economic growth to the uh, to the nation of Argentina. So uh, Malay and his free market principles uh, are seemingly succeeded, succeeding uh, in going that direction. I think uh, while I wouldn't call Trump the Argentine, uh, the equivalent of the Argentine Malay, I would love to see Trump, if he were to become president, move in a more market-based direction, uh, get, get a little more concerned about reducing the size of government and embracing those free market reforms. But uh, things continue apace, they seem to be working in the nation of Argentina.
Yeah, and Paul, it was uh, over the past several years, Argentina was one of those places that people are saying it's hopeless, they can never recover. And to just have a few better policies and a uh, implement some market reforms in just a, a few short months, have things uh, go much better is uh, really uh, an impressive, impressive accomplishment. And dare I say, uh, is it appropriate to say, don't cry for me, Argentina is the new watchword when it comes to their economy, when it, which for the past many, many years, it's just been abysmal there.
Yeah, yeah, it's uh, been abysmal for uh, many years. Uh, Argentina was a wealthy nation at uh, the start of the 20th century, so 1900, for those of you who don't know how that all works, but uh, uh, yeah, in 1900, it was a very wealthy nation. It uh, has been uh, devastated by socialist policies. And then, you know, we've never gone quite down that, that path uh, in the United States to the same extent, but uh, we had, uh, we have an opportunity to, I think if Trump were to be elected, possibly um, he, he could move uh, in ways that are serious about economic reforms, uh, like Malay has. Problems not so dire as Argentina's, but uh, that's the time to act. I know that's uh, counterintuitive, we've got a lot of problems economically building in the United States. All right, thanks for listening to this week's episode. Find all episodes at tippingpointnn.com or at the Rio Grande Foundation's YouTube channel. Subscribe to the show at Apple Stitcher or tell Google Home to play Tipping Point, New Mexico. Thanks to Path3 Marketing for producing this show.